Good evening, everyone. Could I please have Pastor Dean Nelson come forward from St. John's Lutheran Church for the opening prayer?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all good gifts, especially we thank you for the rain that you provide, both for us here in the valley and the snow in the mountains. We thank you for everything that -- we thank you for this good land, this beautiful land, this land that is able to produce a lot. We thank you for the good people also of this area, of Los Banos and this area. We pray, Heavenly Father, in this day, for the people of France who are battling cruel and evil people, I mean, as the terrorism that they face there. Also, we pray for the Christians and Kurds and various people who face persecution throughout the world. Thank you for our council and for those who work for the city. Give them strength and motivation and guidance and health to make wise decisions and to serve your people well. We thank you for each person, each person on the council and each person in the city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Well, I'm going to switch things around a little bit. In honor of our newly pinned chief for this meeting, I would like you to lead us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands: one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Director Maloney, roll call.
For you.
Here.
Louis. Silveira.
Present.
Stonegrove.
Here.
Item number four. Let me turn this down. Just hit the down volume, Rick. Okay. All right. Okay. Let's go on to item number four, consideration of approval of agenda. Do I have a motion, Mr. Silveira?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, do I have a second? Mr. Lewis?
Second motion.
Okay. Motion by Silveira, second by Lewis to approve the agenda as stated. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. All right. If I could please have, let's see, I see Alan Wilber, if he's here, come forward. Dan Buzwarik, Kathy Ballard, Mike New, Arkady Faktorovich, Tom Mello, Tom Spada. And is Dave here, Anderson? Did he make it back? No, I guess not. And Susie Toscano called me. She had some dental work to do today and she won't be able to make it. And Margaret Edwards, is she here? Okay. Come on, don't be bashful. Come forward. Okay, face this way. Come on, you're not wanted. I don't know, maybe I should ask the audience. Okay. Well, I have to tell you that volunteering is a heart, volunteerism is a heart and soul of our community. And these individuals standing before you tonight have served a successful two-year term, some of them multiple two-year terms, serving on commissions for the city of Los Banos. And it is with great pleasure that we are able to honor these individuals this evening and honor them. We should honor them every day for their volunteerism and everything that they do for our community to help us make decisions. But tonight, we are, we would like to present you with a proclamation, and I'll just run through the names. Alan Wilber. Alan Wilber is part of our Airport Advisory Commission. Dan Buzwarik, you can raise your hand if you'd like to. Dan Buzwarik is also part of our Airport Advisory Commission. Kathy Ballard, Economic Development Advisory Commission. Margaret Edwards, Economic Development Advisory Commission. Dave Anderson, Airport Advisory Commission. Mike New, Parks and Recreation Commission. Arkady Faktorovich, and you know, he took me two years. He worked with me over a number of days to pronounce his name. For an Italian to pronounce a Russian name, that's not bad. Okay. And Tom Mello, Planning Commission, and Arkady's part of our Planning Commission. Tom Spada is part of our Planning Commission, and Susie Toscano, part of our Planning Commission. And later on, we will be appointing the members who will serve for the next two years that were up for renewal and who the, any new individuals who will be on these commissions. So again, tonight is with great pleasure that I'd like to present these proclamations, and we will present them to the individuals who are not here this evening. So, the first one we have is Alan Wilber. Congratulations, Alan. Thank you, thank you for your service. Dan Buzwarik. Kathy Ballard. See, Margaret is not here this evening. Margaret Edwards. Mike New. And Susie Toscano will make sure that she gets her certificate. Again, thank you, all of you, for your service, your volunteerism, and for helping us to make suggestions to run our city and to help our city council function. Thank you so much. Proclamations recognizing High School Western Athletic Conference, whack, is that, is it whack? You're not whacked, you're just whack. Coaches of the year, and they are, with these individuals, please come forward. Dustin Capresso, Football Coach of the Year. Lynn Barcellos, Tennis Coach of the Year. Greg Solis, Volleyball Coach of the Year. And Michael Perkins, Soccer Coach of the Year. And, let's see, I think I've worked with three of you, not four of you. Mike, how long have you been here?
My 10th year.
Your 10th year?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it's my 10th year of retirement, so. But the rest of these individuals, they're not old, they're just been here longer. Well, and we're very happy to have you, and we're glad you all stayed, and it was a pleasure working with you when I was with the school system. And I have to tell you, we have a fine group of individuals. These coaches are dedicated to the students of the city of Los Banos. They do a fine job, they're great role models for young people, and I can't say I give you enough accolades about them because we are just so happy that you decided to make Los Banos their home and stay here. So, thank you so much for what you've done for our community. And Dustin, Dustin recently completed his third season as head varsity football coach. Look a little older, though. And for the last three years, Dustin's team had a total of 26 wins, and Coach Capresso and the Los Banos Varsity Tigers Football Team won the 2014 Western Athletic Conference Championship, going undefeated in league play. So, again, we are just so happy, Dustin, that you are here, and thank you so much for what you've done for our community. For the past 20 years, Lynn Barcellos has been the head varsity tennis coach at Los Banos High School. And for 20 years, and the boys and girls, and she's coached the boys for, what, 18 years? 18 years. And Coach Barcellos has been named the Western Athletic Conference Coach of the Year a total of five times, including this year. That's a great honor. Coach Barcellos and the Los Banos Tigers Varsity Tennis Team have had an impressive winning streak of 60 wins in the girls' league matches since 2010. Excellent. And we are just so happy to have you again, and I didn't know you had coached the boys all those years. But, yeah. So, I'm telling you, another great role model for the boys and girls and the students of Los Banos. Greg Solis really, just completed his eighth year as head varsity volleyball coach. And during the eight years, Coach Solis has won three Western Athletic Conference Championships, including this year. Over the last eight years, Coach Solis and the Los Banos Varsity Tigers Volleyball Team have had a total of 111 wins. And Coach Solis has been the Western Athletic Coach of the Year three times, and the Central California Conference Coach of the Year once. So, another impressive record, and thank you so much, Greg. Michael Perkins recently completed his first season as a varsity soccer coach for Pacheco High School. Coach Perkins and the Pacheco Varsity Soccer Team placed fifth in the 2014 Western Athletic Conference. And in their first season, Coach Perkins and the Pacheco High Varsity Soccer Team had a total of four wins. Coach, this is your first year, but still, we see a lot of good things happening, and thank you again for being here. So, it's kind of nice when two bodies, the school district and the city of Los Banos is able to recognize educators, and educators in any field. And tonight, it happens to be the coaching staff. And the coaching staff, you are involved in the athletics, the PD department of your respective schools, and you touch more lives than probably anyone. So, again, thank you for the role that you play with our young adults. Do we have someone here to accept a proclamation for Martin Luther King Jr. Day? I guess not. Okay. Well, we will read this. Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was born in Atlanta, Georgia, on January 15, 1929, and made a lasting impression as a key leader in the American Civil Rights Movement during the '50s and '60s. And whereas during the speeches and rallies in our nation's capital and throughout America, Dr. King promoted his dream of a nation where everyone is treated as equals and is judged not by their color of their skin, but the content of their character. And whereas people throughout the world continue to look to Dr. King's example as a model of human relations and efforts in the daily struggle for civil rights have continued since his assassination in 1968 and will continue until his dream of absolute freedom, equality, and justice for all is finally realized. And whereas the city of Los Banos is proud to honor and celebrate the life of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., now therefore be proclaimed that the mayor and the city council members of the city of Los Banos to hereby recognize Monday, January 19, 2015, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day. So, you can applaud. So, if we could call someone and have them pick this up after, okay? Thank you. Rick? Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. When you approach the podium, please state your name and city of residence. Okay? And tonight, we have...
Oh, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just trying, wait a minute. I'm sorry, I'm ahead of myself here. That's what happens when you take off one meeting. Okay. So, is there anyone who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council and city staff. My name is Jared Canouster from Los Banos, California. Just want to introduce myself now as the new 2015 Chamber of Commerce President. I'm very humbled and very excited and very grateful to have this position. I'm anxious to work with you and with city staff to bring the Chamber of 20, the 2015 Chamber of Commerce to a really exciting year. So, if you need me, just call on me. And we got a great board, my board members are really great. We just got eight new board members elected this couple of past months, and I'm going to tap into their experiences. They got lots of experiences, so. And the rest of the board, too. All right, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Mike New of the city of Los Banos. I want to start by saying, this is wrong. I actually began serving in 2007, not in 2013, on the Park and Rec Commission. I was a county appointee for five years. I was also the chair for two years. And the reason I want to speak to you is about the Park and Rec Commission and suggest that, Mr. Mayor, council members, you should consider getting rid of the Park and Rec Commission. It's a waste of time for all of those involved. And the reason I say that is, you don't give it anything real to do. The big decisions about the parks are given to the Planning Commission, not to the Park and Rec Commission. In seven years of being on the Park and Rec Commission, never once did Mother's Day in the park come before us for review or acceptance. It went to the Planning Commission. Any commercial activity in the parks always go to the Planning Commission. We see nothing. Other things that happen, we have park acceptance when we are doing developments, which are going to begin again. Never once have we ever been asked on the park commission to take a look at a park before the city accepts them. Had they, we might not have situations like the Vineyards complexes, which were put in with absolutely nothing on those, nothing more than, in fact, Vineyards 3 is just a basin with grass when it was accepted by the city. There isn't so much as a garbage can out there. That remains the case today. Vineyards 2 has a playground area, but none of the Vineyard Parks can be used in wet weather because they don't have paths all the way around them. And it seems that we let the developers come in, show us a nice park in the plan, but what we accept is less. And if you're going to have a Park and Rec Commission, let them do something like review the parks before the city accepts them. If you're not going to let the Park and Rec Commission actually do its job of overseeing the parks and the rec department, then let them stay home, get rid of the commission. Because they're just coming here on Tuesday nights when people actually show up for the meetings. Unfortunately, city staff quite often have to show up when we had no quorum. But the reason a lot of those people didn't show up is they didn't feel they were actually doing anything. So, please, consider either using that commission or getting rid of the commission. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum, and we will go on to consideration of approval of consent agendas. Items on a consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. And tonight, we have?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 150705 through 151139 in the amount of $2,109,546.41. Minutes for the December 3, 2014 city council meeting. Minutes for the December 16, 2014 adjourned city council meeting. City Council Resolution Number 5631, appointing members to the Measure P Citizens Oversight Committee. City Council Resolution Number 5632, rejecting the bid for the lease of one new 2015 model aerial truck. City Council Resolution Number 5633, adopting a revised budget for the fiscal year 2014-2015 as it pertains to revenues and expenditures in the police evidence account. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay. Is there any city council member who would like to remove an item for discussion at this time? Mrs. Silveira?
If there, if no one wants to remove one, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Okay. Do I have a second? Mrs. Lewis?
Second motion.
Motion by Silveira, second by Lewis to approve the consent agenda as stated. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Public hearing. If you challenge a proposed action as described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item 8A, public hearing. To receive public comment and consideration of the annexation of 2013-01, pre-zone 2013-02, pre-annexation development agreement, and associated mitigated negative declaration for AMG and Associates proposing to incorporate approximately 28.5 acres into the city of Los Banos for future development of industrial-type uses. Generally located on the southeast corner of Johnson Road and Overland Avenue, assessment parcel number 081-110-007. Item 8A1, ordinance number 1124, amending the zoning map to pre-zone approximately 28.5 acres located at the southeast corner of Overland Avenue and Johnson Road, Merced County, California, from county general agricultural A1 to industrial to be annexed into the city of Los Banos. Item A2, ordinance number 1125, approving the pre-annexation development agreement with AMG and Associates LLC regarding the project commonly known as AMG Industrial Business Park Annexation. And item 8A3, city council resolution number 5629, requesting the annexation and pre-zone of approximately 28.5 acres of property located at the southeast corner of Overland Avenue and Johnson Road in the county of Merced, California, more specifically identified as assesseded par- assessed parcel number 082-110-007. Okay, and, yes, so we're finished with that one? Are we going to... I'll wait till after that, okay? So let's just deal with 8A and let's go to Assistant Planner Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. So I'm going to keep this presentation pretty brief. This project first came before you at the city council meeting of December 3rd, and at that public hearing, the city council certified the mitigated negative declaration by adopting Resolution Number 5628 and waived the first reading of ordinance numbers 1124 and 1125 and introduced them by title, and then considered Resolution Number 5629 to be acted upon tonight at this public hearing. The proposal is for the annexation of 28 and 1/2 acres into the incorporated city limits. The project's located on the southeast corner of Johnson Road and Overland Road and is currently being farmed now. The subject property is surrounded by the incorporated city limits on three sides, the east, south, and west, and it has been historically used for agriculture. The Los Banos Planning Commission held a public hearing on this matter on November 12th and recommended approval of the mitigated negative declaration and the annexation with the pre-zone and the pre-annexation development agreement to the city council. So at this time, staff is requesting that the city council adopt ordinance number 1124, amending the zoning map to pre-zone approximately 28 and 1/2 acres located on the southeast corner of Overland Avenue and Johnson Road into the city of Los Banos, and then adopt ordinance number 1125, authorizing the mayor to execute a pre-annexation development agreement between the city of Los Banos and AMG and Associates, and then adopt Resolution Number 5629, requesting the annexation and pre-zone of approximately 28 and 1/2 acres located at the southeast corner of Overland Avenue and Johnson Road into the city of Los Banos. And that concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any of your questions.
Okay. Well, why don't we do... complement if you have a question. Can we clear on the whole side? Okay? So, I... Oh, I'm sorry. No questions at this time? All right, so why don't we do this? Why don't we go to the public hearing and to receive public comment and consideration of annexation 2013-01 Pre-Zone 2013-02 Pre-Annexation Development Agreement and Associated Mitigated Negative Declaration for AMG and Associates proposing to incorporate approximately 28.5 acres into the city of Los Banos for future development of industrial-type uses. Generally located at the southeast corner of Johnson Road, Overland Avenue, assessment's parcel number 081-110-007. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item in a public hearing? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing and bring it back to council level. Council, do we have any questions or do I have a recommendation? Mrs. Silvera?
I have one quick question for Stacy, and I should have gotten to you sooner with this question, and I hope you have the answer for me. So right now that property is being farmed. I guess one of the concerns that I thought about afterwards, after we talked about this at the last meeting, is now that property, if, you know, if it goes through tonight and it gets annexed into the city, one of my concerns is that's a big area and you have Cogomi right across the street there, you have some other industrial... that there's a... the electrical place is in there, is with weed abatement. That's a, you know, it's being farmed now. How long will it continue to be farmed, when and if it's annexed into the city? I guess my concern is, is if it's not farmed, then, you know, are they... is the applicants, are they aware of that they're going to need to be taking measures to keep, you know, keep the weeds under control because it's a heavily traveled area and that's where my concerns are? So comments on that, please?
Absolutely. The CCID water rights, the CCID policy is that the property detach after three years of annexation being recorded by Lafco. So they're given three years to decide whether they want to move those water rights or sell them or just, I believe, give them up. But they can continue to farm the property at a Class II tier. So it can... it'll be grandfathered, it'll continue to be used as farmland for as however long the property owner would like until they can develop. I do know in conversations with the property owner that he is anticipating proposing a master plan, which is requirement of the development agreement, as quickly as possible, and he would like to market the property with that master plan, and his hopes are to get development occurring in that area as quickly as possible. I've already started incorporating this project with the help of Merced County Economic Development Department into leads and hopefully getting some good response. And those leads are generated by the state of California, and having a 28 and 1/2 acre parcel to be able to compete with other communities around us is pretty helpful. So we've already started the buzz and getting the word out that we have this property available.
Okay.
I didn't really answer your question about weed abatement, but that would then be under code enforcement and then it would follow under the city ordinance, and we would be tracking that and making sure that they're following those ordinances as well.
Okay, and then, so that made me think of another question is, regarding utilities, how... obviously there's... it's not all plumbed in because it's a piece of farm ground right now. Utilities, are they going to be relatively easy to, you know, because I know that's one of the big deals, is they want the utilities there or at least close by because...
Absolutely.
They have to bring in a lot of utilities. That creates a lot more expense for the project.
Yes, we do have infrastructure on Johnson and Overland, and it is sized for industrial uses. It's... the general plan already designated this area for industrial, so it's been planned for such type uses. Now, when the property's ready to be developed, we'll get a specific plan and we'll actually know what the property will be used as. If it is going to be a heavy water user, then they're going to have to adjust the infrastructure to be able to sustain that. We'll be working with Public Works and making sure that the infrastructure meets our master plans.
Okay, and then, last question. You talked about, and this is something that I'm glad that is part of the annexation agreement, is that they have a master plan for this whole piece, so it's not piecemealed out into, you know... So, I'm going to be hypothetical for a second. If they don't come with a master plan, or if maybe they come with one now and then a year from now decide that they want to piecemeal it out, can you explain to me what would happen then?
The master plan, so hypothetically speaking, if they don't do a master plan, they cannot develop. The development agreement states that they cannot get a building permit or any entitlement until they do that master plan first. And so if they did a master plan and then wanted to piecemeal it, that master plan is going to dictate... it's going to be an umbrella over that full 28 and 1/2 acres, and it's going to dictate everything that is going to happen. A great example of a good master plan that was done is the Stone Creek Plaza, the Stone Creek Shopping Center. There's vacant pads there, but there's already a vision set in place of what that whole shopping center is going to look like, and it won't be piecemealed together because it's already been approved. So the same type of concept would be applied to this area, and they would need to follow that, or it would have to come back to the planning commission and to the city council because it follows like a zone change type entitlement, and he would be approving any changes that they would want to do to that master plan.
Very good. Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, if there are no other comments, I would like...
Do you have a comment?
I was just going to add to that is not only can they not develop it, they cannot subdivide it. So the incentive there really is to prepare the master plan because there's really nothing they can do with it until that master plan's in place. Once they have the master plan in place, then they can subdivide it, but all development will follow the conditions of the master plan. So that was the whole idea of not allowing an annexation of this size and have it immediately subdivided into smaller parcels, and there'd be no plan as to how it was all going to fit together. So I think the development agreement's for 20... 20 years?
No, we did less.
Did we do less?
Mm-hmm.
Can't remember the term of the agreement. And we anticipated that we would have an ordinance in place at the expiration of this development agreement that would require a master plan for properties like this.
Okay, and so that... another question then is, is at the end of that 10 years, if nothing hap... if we didn't have an ordinance in place, what happens?
Theoretically, they could subdivide and start developing per the city code, but the plan was always to have an ordinance in place, and that this one just came faster than we could develop the ordinance. So there will be hopefully an ordinance in place in terms of master planning for annexations of this size.
Very good.
Okay. Other questions?
If there are no other questions, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 1124 as stated.
Hold on a minute, we're having to waive the second reading.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
I've changed that. I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1124 and 1125. Or would you like me to take those separately?
Let's do them separately.
Okay.
Okay, and do I have a second? Mr. Freya?
My second motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Silvera, second by Freya, to waive this... the first reading, or second reading, of ordinance number 1124. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Mrs. Silvera?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading on ordinance number...
No, no, we have to go... we're going to do adoption now.
We're doing them individually?
Yes.
Okay, my bad. Sorry.
No problem.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1124 as stated.
Mr. Freya?
Second.
Okay, motion by Silvera, second by Freya, to adopt ordinance number 1124 as read. And let's do... let's have a roll call vote. Director Maloney?
Freya?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Silvera?
Yes.
Stonberg?
Yes.
Walther?
Yes. Okay, let's go on to item number two, ordinance number 1125. Mr. Silvera?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1125 as previously stated.
Okay, Mr. Freya?
Second.
Motion by Silvera, second by Freya, to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1125. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Mr. Silvera?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1125 as previously stated.
Mr. Freya?
Second.
Okay, motion by Silvera, second by Freya, to adopt ordinance number 1125. Director Maloney, roll call vote.
Freya?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Silvera?
Yes.
Stonberg?
Yes.
Walther?
Yes. Okay, item number three, city council resolution number 5629 as read. Mr. Silvera?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve city council resolution number 5629 as previously stated.
Okay, Mr. Freya?
Second.
Motion by Silvera, second by Freya, to approve city council resolution number 5629. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Okay, let's go on to item B, public hearing. To receive comment and consideration of an ordinance to regulate unattended donation and collection boxes. B1, ordinance number 1126, adding Article 40, Chapter 3, to Title IX of the Los Banos Municipal Code relating to unattended donation boxes. And Assistant Planner Elms?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, again. So tonight's proposal, I'm going to give you a little bit of background on our existing situation here in town and how this all came about. So the city received some complaints from residents and businesses that there was a proliferation of boxes. They were a target for scavengers. There was some illegal dumping happening. They were unsightly and detrimental to surrounding businesses. There were potential health and safety concerns, and these donation bins were being placed on private property without permission. So based on these complaints, city staff contemplated how to approach this situation and decided that an ordinance needed to be put into place to regulate the use of donation bins and boxes. Assembly Bill 918 is legislation that says that unattended donation boxes provide... need to provide a written display of the organization benefiting from the donation. And so we used this assembly bill to help write the ordinance. They need to identify if they're nonprofit or for-profit, and it does not limit municipalities from placing further restrictions on the bins. So with that as a foundation, we were able to create an ordinance that we presented to the planning commission and that is being presented to you tonight. So part of the development of the ordinance, what we did was we thought about the most streamlined but the most efficient way to provide a permit for property owners and vendors, donation bin vendors. So with that, we decided that the permit process would be through an administrative permit. This way, there would not be additional hoops to go through the planning commission just to approve one bin, two bins, three bins, that as long as it met the criteria of the ordinance, staff would be able to analyze that and determine whether it would be approved or not. The part of the process would require property owner consent on each application. There would be a permit fee, a processing application fee. There would be a renewal, and it would... the permit would be valid for one year, and then staff would need to renew that permit each year and issue a new permit. And that there would be a revocation and new abatement if the property was failure to comply. It would need to be removed immediately. So with that, we also focused on location, concentration, and zoning districts. So we put into place that it would not be allowed in residential uses, residential areas, that they would be limited in the number of boxes per parcel. So as a part of the ordinance, we incorporated one to three boxes per parcel. It seems to be the industry standard. And that they would not be located within 400 feet of another box. They would need to be not placed on required parking spaces or placed in a place that would pose traffic or visibility issues, and that they would not obstruct bicycle or pedestrian traffic, and that they would need to be five feet away from the public right-of-way. The size we set was four by four by six, which is an industry standard. It's a typical-sized box in the sizes of the boxes that we have here in town existing. And also, we put in a maintenance require that the property would need to be free of junk, garbage, trash, debris, and graffiti. The boxes must be locked and secured, and that they would need to be emptied every 30 days. And then we put an associated fee with that for the initial application. It's a non-refundable fee of $180, and that's to recoup staff's time in the analysis of that initial application and the processing. And then each year after that, there's a renewal fee of $50.
Per box, right?
No, it's per location.
Or per location?
Per location, yes.
Per location?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then there's also an appeal, a process, and that appeal, any decision that's made would then be appealed to the city manager within 10 days of a written notice of decision. So staff did make some revisions to the ordinance, and this occurred after we received a letter from Use Again requesting the city consider revising the ordinance for clarification. And so it had gone to the planning commission, and the planning commission, with the creation of the proposed ordinance, had recommended approval to the city council. And then after receiving a letter on November 18th by Use Again, we went back to the planning commission just for clarification on the ordinance. The revisions consisted of clarifying the intent of the ordinance as it pertains to for-profit operations of donation collection bins. So we just needed to make a clarification that we were not eliminating for-profit operations to be vendors, that we increased the maximum size to industry standard. The original ordinance had three by three by six, and we were notified by Use Again that four by four by six was more appropriate for the industry standard, and that we required language for the outside of the donation collection bins to say whether they're for-profit or non-for-profit. And then restricted placement within five feet of public right-of-way. That was bas... That was based internally, staff-wise, with discussions between myself and the city attorney. The original ordinance stated that it needed to be 5 feet away from the property line, and in some instances, that's, that's not really a good idea, that would leave a 5-foot gap in some areas. An example of that would be Los Banos Donuts, that has it up against the fence line, and the intent is that it's 5 feet away from a sidewalk or pedestrian right-of-way versus the property line. So we made those changes. We took it back to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission recommended approval to the city council. Also, a part of this ordinance is implementation. The property, within 60 days of adoption, would need to have, obtain a permit for unattended donation boxes. And then those that are not permitted will be cited for action by code enforcement, and they will need to be removed. So if they're not in compliance with the code, within 60 days of the ordinance becoming effective, they will need to be removed from the property. This here, Ariel, plots out all of the existing donation bins that we have in town. There are currently 10, and they're listed for you in your staff report, and they're mostly 400 feet apart. There is one area in town on North Mercy Springs that it's, it's a bit closer than 400 feet apart, but in that instance, when the property applies for their permit, first one is going to get it. The second one that comes in, it's, it's, I believe it's a church, and then the convenience store, they both have bins. Whoever comes in first would then be able to get the permit. Otherwise, there'd be an over-concentration. It wouldn't meet the ordinance. So most other places, it's more than 400 feet away. And I did speak to a couple of the property owners regarding Use Again and their contracts and how those work. And Henry Rogers is here from Use Again, and he can speak on their behalf. But in speaking to some of the property owners, they do have contracts with Use Again. Use Again is the company in Los Banos. They are not the rogue company that actually initiated this whole process because they were dumping the bins in the middle of the night. That was another company. They have since vacated town since we've started this process and started a regulating policy. So Use Again has been very cooperative with city staff in helping us and giving us information. They're very helpful with the Planning Commission answering questions that they had. And they do have contracts with each of the property owners. The owners essentially have a lease, and Henry Rogers can speak to that. So they are given payment for leasing that space where their bins are located. And they seem to be a very good neighbor. The property owners that I had spoken to had positive things to say about Use Again in that whenever they had issues, they were immediately there on the site to fix the bins or to address whatever issues were going on. So this is a picture, this is a Use Again box. This one is located on Ward Road, right behind A&amp;S Metals. And this is at Town and Country Liquor. This is 3 bins. What you typically see around town right now is anywhere between, the majority is 2 to 3 boxes. We don't really have many sites that are just 1 box. Most of them are 2 to 3. They come in pairs. Again, Henry Rogers can speak to that. And so with that, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the proposed ordinance on December 10th, 2010. And a public comment, a public hearing was published in the Los Banos Enterprise on Friday, December 26, 2014, and a letter of support was received by Use Again, and no other public comments were received. So with that, staff is recommending that the city council waive the first reading and introduce ordinance number 1126, adding Article 40, Title IX, Chapter 3 of the Los Banos Municipal Code relating to unattended donation collection boxes. That concludes my presentation. And Henry Rogers, like I said, from Use Again, is here to answer any questions as well as myself.
Okay. At this time... At this time, do I have any questions from council? My plan would be to open up the public hearing and then hear from the applicant, and then bring it back to council level, if that's okay, and then we can, our questions can be asked then. Is that okay with council members? Okay. All right. So why don't we, well, we'll give everyone the benefit, why don't we have Henry Rogers? Why don't you come up? And if you'd like to say a few words and talk about your plan and the boxes, why don't you do that? And that would give us all the information, then we'll open the public hearing.
Of course. Well, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for being here tonight. My name is Henry Rogers, and I am here representing Use Again. Like you heard, Use Again is a for-profit company that collects unwanted textiles and resells them in the U.S. and abroad, diverting millions of pounds of clothing and from our landfills generated new revenue streams for U.S. businesses and nonprofits. Little facts here. According to the EPA, 85% of all discarded textiles, that's about 11 million tons, are sent to our landfills. We work to reduce textile waste by providing convenient locations to drop off your surplus textiles. For example, in 2014, Use Again diverted 7.2 million pounds of clothing and other household textiles from California landfills. We applaud your effort in regulating the proliferation of these bins. The proposed initial application fee of $180 per location and the renewal fee of $50 per location is fair and reasonable. Use Again appreciates all the time and energy that has gone into developing this framework and supports the adoption of this ordinance. And like I said, I'm available for questions.
Okay. Thank you. Well, we'll have you come back up if there are questions.
Oh, sure.
I'm going to open the public hearing right now.
Thank you.
And this is a city action or city ordinance, so we're going to get as much information as we can, listen to the public if they'd like to comment, Henry, and then if need be, we can call you back up.
Of course.
All right. Thank you. All right. Why don't I now open the public hearing? Is there anyone who would like to speak on ordinance number 1126 at this time? Not seeing or hearing anyone. I will now close the public hearing on ordinance number 1126 and bring it back to council level. Okay? Council members, do we have any questions? Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions of Mr. Rogers.
Yes, ma'am.
The agreements that were obtained from the property owners, were they done prior to your bins being placed on their property?
Correct. So our company will obviously, you know, in the term, in the area of business development, will work with the property owners or leasing agents and ask, is it okay if, you know, A, we place these bins here, and this is the benefits of having it, and this is the site agreement? So before any bins are placed or anything is moved onto a property, this is obtained, and that's, that's our, it's on, the onus is on us to do that, and then proceed with all the regulations that are required with the city.
And you have an agreement with your customers or with the property owners for payment or stipend for having your bins on their property?
Correct, ma'am.
Is that equitable for every, I mean, is it the same price for everyone, or do you negotiate a price?
There's different programs. So for example, some of them, they'll get a percentage of what's, whatever's collected and, you know, the revenue generated from that. For example, we have some programs with some schools where it's kind of fundraising in the process. And then there's also a curriculum that was developed by SMART, which is a secondary materials and recycle textiles association. It's like a chamber of commerce for textile recyclers.
So what would it be for Los Banos? Because we're not...
I do not have that number, but I can get that for you.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. But that's it for right now for questions for him, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is there anyone else? Council members who have questions?
I have questions. I'm not finished, so...
Okay.
You're talking about them, Mr. Rogers.
Yes, Mr. Rogers, right now. You say they're emptied every 30 days, is that correct?
More so. It depends on the, 30 days is the minimum. But we have some bins, for example, that are serviced like once a week, twice a month. It just depends on how active each particular bin is.
Okay. Stacy, what, what happens if there's a mess outside the bin? How does that, how does that, how's that taken care of?
Typically, the, and because Use Again is the only company now that we have left, the property owner contacts Use Again, and whether the bin has been broken into and that's where the mess is, then Use Again comes and fixes the bin. If it's just an issue of articles of clothing being left outside, I'm sure the property owner also steps in. It's their own property, and they, they come and clean them up. So it's all a part of that agreement with Use Again.
Okay. And what is your service policy if the bin needs repairing? How long?
We like to do it within 24 hours. You know, adhering to AB 918, there is that 24-hour line that we have. We do have folks that, you know, are here for service. We have a fleet of drivers who, that's their job, and not only servicing the bins and making sure they're empty, kept up and everything, so...
Okay. And how many bins are there in town now? Individual bins?
I believe in Los Banos, I think it's 11 to 12.
11 to 12 in groups of 3? Or how many individual bins do you have?
I believe 11 to 12 bins.
Henry, just for clarification, Henry's referring to locations?
Okay. No, no, not locations. I'm talking about individual bins. Because like a Town and Country, there were 3 bins there.
I would have to, I can get back to you on that exact number.
Excuse me, there's 30, yeah. Are there as many as 33 bins in town?
There could be, but I think, you know, most of our locations have 2 bins.
Okay, so 20 to 30 bins. And Stacy, is there any limit on how many can be placed in town?
Absolutely. Not on the locations. We do have a limit on concentration. They have to be 400 feet apart. But we do, on the limit of how many per location, it can be between 1 and 3.
Okay, 1 and 3. So let's say we have between 25 and 30 bins right now in town. And if another, now, this is only just one company, correct? And we could have more than one company apply, correct?
Yes, they would have to meet the criteria of the ordinance.
They'd have to meet the criteria, but, but the bins, let's just say the schools wanted to put them in front of the schools, or, or other people wanted to come in and say they're going to pay a higher percentage rate to the owner of the property, or, I mean, I don't want to have bin wars here. And I'm, I'm just concerned that we stopped the proliferation of illegal bins, and now could we have a proliferation of legal bins? And in the process, sure, we'd make some money out of it, because it'd be $180 per location. But I don't know if we're passing an ordinance, and I think we want to pass an ordinance that has some teeth to it, to where we don't have these bins just, just all over the place again. And I don't know, I'd like to hear from the other council members, but I have a couple more questions. And you said that the bins have to be placed in 5 feet away from a right-of-way, correct?
Yes.
So that would eliminate them being placed, like in the downtown in front of a business?
Absolutely. That would be the public right-of-way. Any downtown area, I couldn't see it being able to fit in any of the storefronts. The sidewalk in the downtown area is the public right-of-way. Most of the places that Use Again would even be looking at, or any such company, most of the places are along Mercy Springs and Pacheco, and they're more of retail areas, kind of shopping centers where people locate.
And does the city have any right to say that if a bin becomes a problem or a hazard, would the city in this ordinance have the right to say, remove it?
Yeah. We do have discretion. There are, there is maintenance, the, back on the maintenance, it needs to be free of junk, garbage, trash, debris, and graffiti. It has to be locked and secured, and it must be emptied every 30 days. That's a requirement of the ordinance. And then we could have code enforcement go out because they are not following the ordinance, and it'd be revoked. Their, their permit could be revoked.
Now, would there be all, you know, a warning process or whatever? Could you just be...
Absolutely. Code enforcement would go through their, their process.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Now, let's hear from other council members. I see all the lights lit. Okay, let's go to Mr. Silvera first.
Just a couple of questions. You guys, are you a nationwide company, just a California company? Give me a little bit of background there.
Sir, we are nationwide. Headquarters, they are located in West Chicago. There's 2 service centers or hubs here in California, 1 in Hayward and 1 in Lake Forest, which is Southern California in Orange County. And that's how the service area is kind of divided up.
Well, I guess then, one comment I would have for you is if you guys decide to make a Central California hub, maybe you guys think about Los Banos. We got, we just, we just talked about maybe annexing some new commercial property.
Funny you should say that. You know, we let, one of your planning commissioners mentioned that, and, you know, we joined, recently joined the chamber at his request, and, you know, we're always looking for locations. I mean, the textile industry is a new industry, and there's a lot of growth associated with it. And one thing that we're seeing, and a reason why we're so happy with this ordinance, is, you know, we're negatively affected by those rogue operators that put the bins out in the middle of the night. You know, we're a brick-and-mortar company that, you know, in those site agreements, there's, you know, everything from liability, ensuring that we're in charge of everything, while some of the other operators don't. So in essence, we're getting undercut on it. So that's why we're real happy with kind of the ordinance that's being placed here, hopefully going to be placed here in the city of Los Banos.
Very good. And then I guess this is just, I'm going to make a comment to an earlier question asked. I think we talked about the unlawful ones and then maybe an overabundance of lawful ones. I think, I really think the market will dictate. If it becomes saturated with them, then it's not profitable, then I would think that you would, you would keep from putting them in.
I could speak to that if you don't mind. You're absolutely right. The market does dictate where it goes. I mean, those boxes are pretty expensive for us to manufacture and keep up, because, you know, we're not just dropping them, we're servicing them. So we have employees that come around and make sure that, you know, they're emptied properly and they're serviced. And if a bin is not producing, it's pulled, because it's going to, it costs us more to service it than it is to keep it. So, you know, we've removed, we, we remove bins all the time that aren't, you know, performing that what we need to have it perform to. So we're not just going to leave bins out there, because, I mean, it, it costs us money.
Very good. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Stacy, just one clarification. This is a living ordinance, so anytime if, if we see a proliferation or you see this, this is always can come back to the council for any type of amendments. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
And it, it wouldn't stop us from adjusting the, the ordinance to reflect what Los Banos should be like with the bins?
You're absolutely right. This ordinance is a living, breathing document, and as we see, changes need to be done, we can, we can make that possible.
Okay. All right. All right, I'm, okay. Mr. Freya?
The density requirement is, it's not just per company, it's per bin, right?
It's per location, yes.
Okay. So, so you couldn't have another company come in and increase the density? Whatever the density is between whatever companies are here, that's what's allowed?
Exactly.
Good. Thanks.
Okay. Ms. Stonegrove?
I just have a question about the, the bins. I think for Stacy or for you, but the bins that you talked about in North Mercy Springs that were closer than 100 feet, are those Use Again bins in both locations?
No. It's Use Again at the convenience store, and I didn't get the name. I know Kathy did a lot of the groundwork for me on this. She was a big help. Did her homework for me on this ordinance. I don't think it's 7th generation, and they were new, they were new boxes that were just recently dropped off. And it's a church, so I don't know if those are more for the nonprofit of the church or what type of boxes those are, but we would investigate.
Okay. I was just curious. Thank you.
Okay. So, so say this again. So we have a non-permitted box?
One of the boxes are permitted.
I mean, but I mean, okay. But let's go back again. We're going to have 10 loca, we spoke today, Stacy, and you were talking about the 10 locations, and those are legitimate locations?
Yes. Those are legitimate locations. Yes. Those are legitimate locations. The New Life Community Church on, at 1230 Overland Avenue is though 400, it's closer than 400 feet to 403 North Mercy Springs Road, which is Mimbario. So there will need to be a determination made on the location of those bins, when the permit is applied for.
Okay. All right. But right now, as it stands, it would be within 400 feet, correct? And so if it's closer than 400 feet, then are we passing a regulation that we're going to enforce, or are we going to allow waivers on this?
Nope. It has to meet that criteria. If it doesn't meet 1, 2, 3, and 4, I will not sign off on the permit.
Okay, all right. Because I just want to make sure that what we're passing, and what the public hears, is exactly what we're going to do. I mean, there are too many laws that we read about, and they're just, they're toothless. And I just want to make sure that we're not doing that again. Okay. All right. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Stacy, I have a few questions. On some of the definitions, we have permittee, which means the property owner or operator. And I think it's the same information in the new handout that you gave us. And in some of the, you know, I pulled some regulations offline from some other states, in Texas and in New Jersey, and it's either one or the other. It's not both. So, a property owner, from what I've read, is just that, it's the person, or, you know, the entity or what have you, that owns the property. And the operator is the person who is, well, let me see, before I make a statement here. The operator is usually the person who is pulling the permit, the own, you know, the company that's pulling the permit. So when I read this, and I read things that are in the ordinance, which says the property owner or operator, I don't know who's going to pull the permit, and who's going to do what.
Sure.
It would seem to me, based on most of the regulations that I've read, that the owner is the one that's submitting the verification to us in writing of what their intentions are to allow any company to put any of these recyclable bins on their property. And then the company who is seeking a permit is the one that will pull that permit from the city to be able to operate their business here. There was, let's see.
Can I speak to that issue?
Sure.
Yes, go ahead. Because I actually wrote that language, and there are situations where a permittee could be an owner and operator. For instance, a church who wants to operate a bin on their own property would be an owner of the property, owner of the bin, and they would be required to get a permit, so they would be the permittee. In a situation such as this gentleman's describing, typically, the operator would be the permittee, but there wouldn't be any prohibition against the property owner being the permittee. The whole idea behind this is having somebody who's got a permit, who's gone through the process of having this bin located on their property. So we wanted to cover the property owner, the operator, and the permittee. And it could be, they could all be the same persons, or they could be all different people.
So then, what you're saying is that the property owner, who could also pull the permit to allow any business to be on the property, could be held liable for anything that happens if these bins are not kept, or the ordinances aren't followed?
Correct.
Okay. So that, I guess, maybe if I were a property owner, I wouldn't want to do that.
I would anticipate that in most cases, it's going to be the operator who's going to pull the permit, and not the property owner. We wanted to make sure there was enough leeway there, that if it was just, for instance, a church or an organization, and was on their property, they would be both the operator and the property owner. In that case, they would be pulling the permit. So we wanted, we wanted to keep it flexible enough as to who the permittee could be.
And under, under Permitte Again, the new document that was given to us, number five, says that assign notarized statements from the property owner or property owner's agent. And again, most ordinances that I read indicate that it comes from the property owner. I don't know why we would even permit an agent to sign something on behalf of a property owner, because that agent is going to have to give the property owner's permission anyway, so why aren't we just getting the owner's permission?
The thought behind that is, if you have an owner like Lowe's, who are based out of someplace in the East Coast, and they have a local, a local property manager, or somebody local handling the management of their property, it would probably be easier to get their permission than to have to go through some corporate structure. So that's, that was the thought behind allowing, not only the property owner, but a property owner's agent or property manager to be able to give that consent.
And I understand that, but, you know, personally, I don't think that we're going to have Lowe's, or some big corporation allow something like this on their property. Maybe so. But for the most part, from what I see here in town, it's usually the small business person that have allowed these bins to be on their property. So with that in mind, that's kind of the criteria, I'm thinking, is just to kind of keep it clean, so that we don't have people overlapping the authority of an owner of the property.
If the agent has the authority, that's the person that you get the signature from. It would either be the property owner, or the property owner's agent. You could have 10 property owners on one piece of property, and chase around for 10 different signatures for consent, as opposed to them having an agent who's dealing with the property, you know, one person. So that's, it's the idea of the ease of the bureaucratic part of getting this permit, is we don't want to get bogged down in trying to figure out who the, how many property owners have to sign a consent, if there's a local agent here in town who can sign it on behalf of the property owner. That was the idea behind that.
How would we verify the local agent?
Well, they would provide us with a document showing that they're the agent for the property owner.
Which has to come from the property owner.
Well, anytime you give somebody the power to deal with your property, you have an agency agreement. It's not something that's, that's a mysterious document that can't be produced quickly. So, again, we just thought it would be asking people to go through a permitting process, and we didn't want to get bogged down in taking it weeks and weeks and weeks to get permission of a property owner, if there's an agent that could do it right here on site, so.
So should the language be in there, that if it is an agent, that the agent needs to provide verification of?
I don't think we, I don't think we need that. I think we can, we would do that internally anyway.
We do, and just to clarify, as a part of our existing uniform application, an authorized agent is allowed already currently. So this would just be consistent with my existing applications.
Okay. And then, I see also in this ordinance that the permittee or the operator, which could be either the landowner or whoever, has to place a permit affixed on the bin someplace where it could be seen. So, could you explain that a little bit to me, Stacy, how that process would happen? I mean, are they just going to tape it to the bin, or is there going to be a pocket for them to put it in? How is this going to happen?
I'm going to defer that to Mr. Vaughn.
Okay.
I don't think the ordinance speaks to that, but we would work out some kind of regulation where they would have to post it to their, to their bin?
Mobile vendors, we laminate them and make them post it onto their carts. So we typically try to facilitate making it weatherized, making the permit weatherized, and making it appropriate.
And the reason, you know, because it does state in here that the operator shall place a copy of the permit in a predominant and visible location on the front of the box, in plain view. So they are going to be required to place it on there. So if it's a copy, there's, you know, got to be a way to protect this, so that code enforcement can see that it is a legitimate bin that's been permitted. And again, I'm bringing up some suggestions here. One of the things that I read in another ordinance is that this, a particular city had a, like a sticker decal that they would put on the bin. And that way, it's legitimately posted by the city that we have okayed this bin, and those stickers are a little bit easier to keep on there, rather than a laminated, or, you know, a permit slipped in a baggie, which doesn't really look that nice if you're trying to keep this operation looking clean and habitable. Also, on the permitting process, I also read that one city allowed their, they did their permits annually, from January to December. And anyone that applied for a permit in between any of those months, it was prorated. And in my thinking, this kind of makes the process easier for the city and staff to get all that permitting done, out of the way, and you're not having to try to figure out who has a permit, who doesn't have a permit. And if code enforcement needs to deal with this, then they could just, like, do a clean sweep at the end of December. Beginning of the year, we check permits, make sure they're posted on the boxes, and it's not that encumbering. But you make it difficult for your code enforcement staff to try to figure out, you know, who has a permit, is one due this month, or one due that month. And at least, at the beginning of the year, they can do like a visual check, just to make sure everybody has their permit, and it's taken care of. So that's just kind of a suggestion on my part to do that. I, most ordinances that I looked at allow two bins. I particularly would prefer to have two bins over three. I think it's getting to be a little bit much, and the proliferation, even though the area may be kept clean, is still a visual stimulation to the eye to see that many bins as you drive down Pacheco or down Mercy Springs. I know that in the letter, the applicant was requesting that we allow residential areas. Most ordinances that I read did not allow any bins in residential areas at all. So I, Pacheco Boulevard is, you know, kind of like the eye candy of our city, as people drive through, and we're working on trying to make it even better. And I certainly don't want to see these big bins sitting out front there, three lined up. And I know it's three in the ordinance right now, but I would prefer to see it down to two bins. The other things that, it talked about administrative fees for permitting and for the one-time fee, but we didn't get into any penalty phase fees. And this is not directed at this company. It's for any company that may come in here, who doesn't abide, who will not abide by our ordinances. And we don't have anything to, as far as a penalty phase, for anyone who doesn't comply with our ordinances. If the city has to remove a bin because a company doesn't do it in a timely manner, and whatever time we need to set for them to do that, what will be the fine that they pay for us having to pick it up, and what will be the daily storage fee that they have to pay once it's picked up? And, you know, those are things that I saw that were left out of this ordinance. So, you know, we've done a pretty good job here of getting this together, but I just think there's some things that need to be tweaked up. Here's some other things that I saw, where it stated specifically that it had to be X amount of feet from a crosswalk, X amount of feet from a fire hydrant. I know these things are in other ordinances, but this, again, if we can put it in this one ordinance, then it causes people not to have to travel all over the ordinances within our city to figure out, well, what can I do, and what can I do? What can't I do? X amount of feet from fire boxes, from police call boxes, emergency facilities, such as hospitals, 25 feet from any driveway, you know, I'm not quite sure how that would fit in. And it couldn't be any more than X amount of feet from a residential home. So, we do have some residents that live on Pacheco Boulevard, and I certainly, you know, wouldn't want to obstruct the aesthetics of their living area by having these bins near their homes. So those are, those are just some of the things that I saw that were lacking in this ordinance. And we talked about, you know, you have to pick them up, and you have to do this, and if you don't do this, we place the onus on the company, and that's where it should be. But if the company fails to do it, then the city has to step in, and what do we garner from that, once we get involved in having to take possession of property that a company isn't, you know, seeing after? Probably have a couple more things, but that'll do for right now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Vaughn?
I can address some of those things. Section 9-3.4006 indicates that if it's necessary to remove the box and store it, that it will be at the sole cost of the permittee. So we've covered the cost to the city for having to remove it, in terms of any violations and any requests to remove the box. Section 9-3.4007 is our standard administrative penalty language. If they get a citation, it goes through the process. If the, if there is no stated fine, the initial fine is $100, and it increases over a 12-month period to a maximum of $500. So there are administrative penalties for any type of violation of the ordinance, and there are cost recovery terms in the ordinance, should the city have to get involved in removing a box. The only thing we did in terms of the placement beyond the 400 feet was that it would not be, also would not be placed in any required parking spaces, or with any corner vision triangle, so that would, or in any way that it would create a traffic hazard. So, I believe the intent of the ordinance, in terms of the administrative permitting, is for the, the planning department, who will be administering the permits, to determine whether the boxes are being placed in a manner that create a danger or nuisance to others. And I'm not against trying to think of every different permutation that might happen, but I think the intent of it is that they have to get an administrative permit, so they have to get permission as to the actual placement of the permit, without having all, every single definition in terms of where it can or can't be taken care of. So that's what we try to do within, I think it is... 4-001, where it's talking, or, excuse me, where it's talking about where the location of the boxes are. So that would speak to the violations and the penalties.
4-...
Well, in terms of the violations, it's 4-006, which could ultimately result in the revocation of the permit, and the permittee would not be allowed to have another permit for a full year. 4- or then 4-007 is the administrative penalty phase, which we put in every ordinance, which dictates what happens if you get administrative citation. And then, as far as the placement of the box, I'm looking at subsection G, let me find the... It'd be 005, subsection G, talking about the vision triangle, the public right-of-way, and in a way that doesn't constitute a traffic hazard. And we are eliminating any boxes within any residential district.
So, would, may I have a mic?
Sure.
With 4-006 and 4-007, is there something that you're going to give these companies in writing to tell them what the penalty is, if they don't abide by certain things, or do they just get a letter once they violate something? Do they know what they're up against?
They get a copy of the ordinance initially, and we go through that ordinance, as we do with mobile vendors and any other type of vendor. We go through that ordinance with them.
Did you talk about ordinance that has a penalty in it?
Yes. This ordinance will have the penalty.
Okay, but I'm talking about the dollar amount. So you go through this with them, and, you know, generally people, you know, I would assume this company would want to know, well, what am I going to pay, you know, if something comes up? Do we have something that we give to them saying what your dollar fine is going to be?
Yeah, we start -- we generally tell them administrative violation starts off at $100, and it escalates from that, and it tops out at 500.
This question is for --
Henry.
Mr.?
Rogers.
Rogers, thank you. Are you going to have any kind of surveillance around your boxes out there for protection? Or do you depend on the property owners to provide that for you?
Surveillance, no. To my knowledge, there's not surveillance on the bins. I mean, if they're placed in the view corridor of a camera, then there's that surveillance. The issues that we have run into with other bins have been graffiti and, you know, dumping and things of that nature. And as a company, you know, we're the ones that are in charge of that. You know, we take the onus of what's in and around the box. You know, for example, you know, some people don't even, you know, will not only put their textiles in, they might throw, you know, for example, e-waste. You know, we have -- we work with a number of e-waste recyclers, so, you know, if we find it in our box, we don't just throw it away. We actually take it to one of the e-waste recyclers we work with. So the onus is upon us to make sure the area in and around the box is kept free and clear of any debris or, you know, visual blight that might occur.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When you work with a property owner?
Yes, sir.
Can a property owner have more than one vendor on the property? Do you ask them that?
Can you explain that?
All right, let's just say they want one of your boxes and two of some of your competitors.
Sure.
For a total of three boxes.
That's totally up to them. You know, our stipulate, you know, our lease agreement does not stipulate, you know, you have to have two or three of our boxes on your property. If you'd like to have one and then one of a --
That would be in violation of the ordinance within 400 feet. So each operator for each location, so if it's used again, and say it's seventh generation, used again, it's going to get its own permit. Seventh generation would need to come in and get in their own permit. They list the same location, they wouldn't get, it'd be the first come, first served.
But it says, so I guess what I'm asking then, you probably answered my question, but it has it up to, or you have up to three boxes on one location.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so it can't be a combination then?
No.
Okay, and that's specific enough to say that it --
Then it would need another permit on the location.
That would be another permit. But the other permit, I guess maybe I can refine it just a little bit more. The other permit, it can't be a combination of two vendors for a total of three boxes on one property.
Yeah, they would not be able to have two different operators. It's one operator, one permit.
Okay, so if they only choose to get one box out of the three that may be limited to a property, then that is the 400-feet line of demarcation?
Yep, that's the permit for that location.
Okay. Okay. That's the answer I wanted to hear, but, okay. All right, do we have any other questions? Okay, and again, I'll just remind council that this is a living, breathing document, and if we start to see a proliferation that the council is not happy with, and other limits need to be set, or whatever we need to do, we are not bound to continue to eternity with this document. So, okay. Mr. Furia?
If there are no other questions, I would move to waive the first reading of ordinance number 1126 as read by title.
Mrs. Stonegrove?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Furia, second by Stonegrove. Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to make reference to the permitting process, whether or not we're just going to do it on a rolling, whenever it's applied for, or whether or not we could do it annually. I just want to present that to the motion makers. I think it would be easier on our code enforcement staff and our staffing to have permitting done once a year rather than just all through the year.
I defer to staff on that, whatever staff prefers. Of course, we're not dealing with all that many permits, but whatever staff would prefer on that.
Actually, from a staff perspective, it's actually easier just for us to have a flat fee and take it as they come. As for each permit, we keep, we have really great communication with our code enforcement division with our police department. We have a shared drive, for instance, with them. They can see our log. They can see when those permits expire, if I am talking to them, you know, what's going on. We have complete communication with them. Sergeant Sayha and our code enforcement officer, Tammy Allard, are very great with their communication, especially with, through email. So I can guarantee you that we are communicating. They can see that log. They can see whether I have one pending, you know, so what status each permit is in. It is easier for staff, for me, just to keep it at a flat rate. It's easier for finance. They're not having to calculate then what the prorated amount would be. It's just a flat rate.
Okay, this, as is discussed, and the flat rate will start, if you start the permit in June, then the permit goes for one year for the 180 for, until the next June?
Yes, so say you received a permit June 1st, it would expire, you know, the day before June 1st of the next year. And that's how I do, that's how we do all of our other permits, and it just seems to be a process that we have streamlined right now with finance. It works very well.
And the initial fee is 180, and the renewal was 50?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right, I'm going to go back to motion by Furia, second by Stonegrove, to approve or --
Waive the first reading.
Waive, where are we? Oh, yeah. To waive the first reading of ordinance number 1126. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Now, let's go on to Mr. Furia.
I'd like to move to introduce ordinance number 1126 as read by title.
Mrs. Stonegrove?
Second.
Motion by Furia, second by Stonegrove, to, for the introduction of ordinance number 1126 as read by title. Roll call vote?
Furia?
Yes.
Louise, please. Silvera?
Yes.
Stonegrove?
Yes.
Hold on.
Yes. Okay. Mr. Silvera, you have a?
Mr. Mayor, we're done with that one. If I could ask, we could take a five-minute break.
Okay. All right. Mr. Silvera has requested a five-minute break. Any opposition? No, okay.[1100.83]
Okay, if I could have everyone take their seats, we'll resume the meeting. Okay, item number nine, consideration of adoption of city council resolution number 5634, entering to, into the agreements with PG&E Streetlight Turnkey Program and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement documents. And we're going to go to Public Works Director, Fajian.
Mayor and council people. Tonight, I'm going, we're going to present to you, it's called the PG&E Streetlight Turnkey Program. And what it basically is, is a 0% loan from PG&E to retrofit our high-pressure sodium lights, a few of them in town, to LEDs, light-emitting diode lights. And like I said, it is a 0% loan up to $250,000. Just to make a summary of it, it's payable back in the savings that comes through the electrical bill, comes directly, we get billed the same amount, and they retain the savings and pay off our debt. To give you some background on this, currently in the city, we have all but a little over 1,200, 2,500 lights, streetlights, 2,512 streetlights. I'd say 95% to 98% of these are high-pressure sodium, so we are behind the times on LEDs. These cost an average, and this is very conservative, about $245,000 a year in electricity. And that's not maintenance, that's just electricity, so. So with the LED lights that are out now, and they've been out for a while, they're tremendous energy savers. The maintenance is very, is savings also, so you're saving yourself money, and you're also doing environmental by saving some energy at the same time. PG&E has, has established this streetlight replacement program for several years for commercial customers. Many, many cities have done it. I don't have a list, but there's many cities that have done it. I should remember, because the agreement's actually had three different cities listed on it, just to show us examples. And many cities have done it. It is, like I said, for cities, a maximum of $250,000, 0% loan. We'd go for more if we could. And it's, you can't reapply until you've paid, until the savings have paid it off. And that's if the program's still going on. So. And we have an example in here, in the staff report. And this is an example, it's an odd number, I know it says, it's example based on 696 streetlights. How we came up with that number is, it was, I know we should just put 700, be easier, but it was a number they gave us for a similar program at $250,000. Plus, actually, they actually got a rebate of $33,000, so it was a program of $283,000. And they got 696 lights out of that, streetlights, retrofitted. And it shows that on a monthly basis, we save, the savings would be about $4,000 on electricity, on a monthly basis, for the kind of money that we're asking for to do this streetlight retrofit. So, of the $283,000 of this example, only 250 was the loan, the other was a grant. So, the 250 will be paid back in 62 and a half months, which I think is a little, five years and two months. Now, if you went back as an example, and let's say, the PG&E rebate, we won't know about that till we actually start the project, because it's depending on how much is in the pool. There's money in the pool now, but we won't know about that. So, let's say we actually go in there, and they don't have that money, and we have to go down to $250,000. The savings is a little less per month, so that would probably go to five years, 10 months. So, we're talking a few months different. And the important thing about this is, after you pay it off, that you save in a neighborhood, on this example, almost $50,000 a year on your streetlights that were retrofitted. So, it does take a time to pay it off, but it's, totally comes into finance, the whole bill will come into finance as if it was in the old rate structure. We will pay that, and a percentage of that will go towards the rebate. So, we're not losing any money then if we didn't retrofit it. And these are only, there's a little chart here also of the 2,512 streetlights we, we own. This all deals with the 12, about 1,200 streetlights that are the Cobra heads, the long silver animals out there, that we own and maintain under the, under the fee program of LS2. So, what happens is, they actually go in there and they retrofit them. And then they, after they retrofit them, they go into a different billing cycle. So, what they'll do is, they'll take the electricity use, they'll see what the LS2 was, they'll see what the new billing cycle is, and that's the difference that will be credited towards the loan. What you have before you is, there's four different agreements. Two of them have to be, they need to be executed now, so we can get the program started. And one is to apply for a financing supplement to the on-bill financing loan agreement, which just is saying that we're taking a 0% loan. The other one is enter into a standard PG&E services agreement. The third one is enter into an on-bill financing loan agreement, which is further on the loan. And the one that has a lot of blanks in it, if you looked at the staff report, is the actual PG&E proposal number one. What that is, there's blanks in that, because until their contractor, and they have a select group of contractors that bids, it's already pre-selected, and they bid three or four, I don't know exactly how many would be around here, they bid it to them. They do all the billing to PG&E, we don't see the billing, well, we can see it to verify it, of course. So, in this supplement, a proposal number one, that will actually say exactly how many lights are going to be retrofitted, who's doing it, what the cost is, whether it's 249, 500, or 250 exactly. That will say whether we have the rebate, so we can do a few more lights, or we don't get the rebate. So, that's the, so we're asking you now to actually approve the city manager to execute these, two of them currently and two later on. And we can come back and tell you exactly what the numbers were, that's not an issue at all. But they do require city council approval on all four documents, even though two really don't have the information yet. That doesn't mean that Steve has to sign these if he doesn't like them, it doesn't mean that at all. That means if they stay with the program as is, we'll just follow that through and sign them, because they don't want to put any work into this until we have signatures on this. It really does seem like, we've looked at other cities, we've talked to the cities, this is a way, this is quite, this is a win-win for us, it really is. If you remember a while back, the electrical engineering company that, we did the study on saving energy, that came, that Steve had, Steve, can you, yeah, when they came in, one of the things they said was, we needed to start getting our lights into LEDs. And they, they recommended this program, which we had already been looking at, at that time, but it was a great recommendation. Their cost savings estimate on this many lights is very similar, I mean, it's like word for word for what we have here. So, so it was a good, we're kind of following through with what was proposed at that time. Let me just give you a little example, what happens is, is in the construction, when this finally gets agreed upon, it's only a three-month process to retrofit these, it's very fast. What we do is, when the final proposal comes in, and that's the last agreement, it will identify the exact number of streetlights for replacement. And they will try to choose, so they will choose, the 650, the 700, whatever it ends up being, lights that are using the most energy in town, if they're in a clump, of course. So, we're going to get a nice hit on the worst energy users, because they have that on. And they come to us, and we have to approve the areas that they're doing anyway. But it's usually a large area that's all lights, they can work real fast, get them retrofitted, and it's an area that is using the worst energy currently. Then what they do, they have a pre-qualified contractor, it's selected by PG&E, it's, it's all in-house, it's not in-house, it's, they do it, we do not have input into that. The work is performed, and I've been told it's about a three-month period, depending on weather, it's about a three-month period. PT pays for the contractor for the work, including the disposal of all the old equipment. A new rate tier is established for these new lights, and that's where your savings comes in. And the monthly savings in electricity will be used to pay off that 0% loan. So, I estimate between, at the earliest of five years, the most would be six. You can go up to 10, we don't, we, it looks like we will not even come close to that. And after that loan is paid off, those savings will be realized on a monthly billing basis. Plus, we have energy-efficient lights, and we're starting to go there. It'd be nice after that loan is paid off, if it works out, if we can, if it's still going, we can go in for another 700 lights, it'd be nice to do. And as I said, the fiscal impact is, after we pay off the loan, as I said, between five and six years, we, our energy cost savings could be as much as 50,000 annual savings, depending on the, how many lights we can retrofit. And I believe it's going to be between, between 650 and 700, that's what it seems to be. Everyone seems to be very consistent. So, tonight, you know, if there's any questions, I gladly answer. But tonight, we're asking city council to adopt resolution 5634. And it's mainly, it's to, number one, to apply for financing supplement to the on-bill financing loan agreement. Number, that's number one, I'm sorry. And number two is enter into the PG&E services agreement. Number three is enter into the on-bill financing loan agreement. And finally, number four would be, and enter into the final proposal number one, in PG&E's turnkey program. We did have the city attorney review these documents, they're very standard documents, there's not much wiggle room to change anything, and he agreed that that's true, and it wasn't an issue. And Sonia has, the finance director has also looked at this program, and I don't think has an issue with this, at this point at all. So, we're looking for the direction on letting our city manager execute these agreements and go forward. Thank you.
Mr. Silveira?
I get a quick question, just for clarification, Mark. When PG&E charges us for the use of a light, like, I know, because I've only dealt with one of them, I don't deal with whole banks of them, like, so, I know you, it's a per, it's a flat rate. If you, if I, if I put a PG&E light out at my dairy, that's hooked directly to the system and not run through a meter, it's a flat rate per light. Is that not the same for our lights? Or is, like, that whole, let's say, that whole subdivision, or that whole streetlights, they are metered?
They meter them in a hole, but they also, they do both ways, it's two different, there's LS1 and there's LS2. But regardless of that way, they have a separate rate structure for the LEDs that is below that, if they do that. But they do also do, some of ours are by actual electricity use. And we have calculated, I believe, and this is just recollection, that we were looking at like $100 for a year for one of them, that would have, that would go down to like $20 with LEDs. So, it's quite substantial savings.
Well, I just, I, when I saw this, when I, when I got my agenda packet, and I looked over this, I thought to myself, the only thing I could say about this is, man, why didn't we do this sooner? I mean, this is, it's a, it's a no-brainer to me, and I'm glad that we found it. Because, I mean, at the end of the day, you're taking your savings, they're giving you a 0% loan, and it's paying it off. And then, at the end of the five or six years, then we actually get to realize the savings, and it's no cost out of our pocket, and we're being more energy efficient.
Yeah, I can't take credit, the Assistant Public Works Director, Greg Pimentel, was on this pretty hard, and he got this available to us.
No, I just think it's, I think it's, I think it's a great idea, and, and programs like these, I mean, we were spending the money, we're spending the money today, and we're going to continue to spend that money. But the deal with this project is, is that at the end of five years, or six, however it works out, then all of a sudden, we're realizing that, you know, $40,000 to $50,000 a year savings to the city.
And it's really not on our money, which is really great. And I understand, it's PG, this is a great program by PG&E, but it's PUC dictated through the tariffs, so they want cities to do this.
I could say, yeah, they need them to become more energy efficient as well, so, I think it's a great program.
Yes, and it probably should have been done earlier, I agree with you.
Mark, I have a quick question. Can you explain to everybody the difference between LED, the light that an LED light bulb would put off versus the high-pressure sodium light? Just so, you're driving down the street, and you're going to see it, you're going, they're going to notice the difference, but they're not going to know what's going on right away. But can you describe that difference?
There is a difference. And, and they have to do the, the lumens test, and they all illuminate the same area. The best example that I would give you is, when you're in an airplane, and you look down on some cities, and some cities are mostly yellow with their lighting, and other cities are white. Well, the white is the, is the high-pressure sodium, and the yellow is actually the LEDs. Now, they accomplish the same lighting effect, but it is more of a yellowish light than a white light. That is the main difference. That's why we try to get in one area, it'd be bad to go back and forth and back and forth, of course. And just to let you know, also, to try to pick this up in the speed for our specs, we are, we are in the process, and it'll be a, a long process, but we're starting it at least, of revising our specifications, which are older than cane. But we're trying to revise our specifications, and the specification that we're going to revise especially will be the LED standard. We only have a HPS standard, and we've asked people to actually put LED lights, and to give us the standard, and they're actually putting some in, but we want one that's actually our standard.
Mark, what's the life expectancy of a sodium, high-pressure sodium as to a, an LED light?
The high-pressure sodium is usually less than 10 years, and the LEDs are 10 years, with a lot less energy use. Now, some companies are now doing, one company in town are doing, are doing, they're studying this, and they're trying to make, increase that, and they seem to be going pretty, pretty good. Now, I will let you know, we did check the local supplier out, they do not have a LED streetlight available for this program yet, and we did have them check. So, unfortunately, we can't use local yet.
It's OEM?
It's IEM, I think. But the one thing we did do, Public Works, is now, our office over there on Madison, has been retrofitted with all their lights totally, and we're seeing the difference in energy, and how, and we're going to look at that. It's a pilot program. And I'll tell you, as soon as they put it in, everything was so bright, we had to really get used to it. It's amazing, it's amazing what they're doing over there. And hopefully, we see that energy savings.
Now, the light bulbs that I see, you know, they're very expensive, 12, $16 for, for one light bulb, for a 60-year equivalent to 100 watts. And is, there any warranty on these lights at all, if one goes out within a month or so?
Well, yeah, there's, there's a warranty on that, but I believe, there's an eight-year warranty in the back on, not the light itself. There's an eight-year warranty on the equipment to the light, and I believe the light itself has a 10-year warranty.
Very good. So, that would, and I'm just asking for the, you know, for the public's benefit, the, so the sodium, do they come with a warranty? High-pressure sodium?
I really don't know, but it wouldn't be more than five years, because we're, we're replacing them quite often.
See, and that's an even better deal.
Well, the other thing that happens here is, one thing that's not in here is the maintenance issue. And maintenance is a lot less on the LEDs, so that cost is less. Even though PG&E does a lot of the maintenance, sometimes we do it too, when it's on our own lights. As people know, they have to wait almost a month for, to get their lights fixed, and that's just because we have to go to PG&E on it. Well, now there'll be less, hopefully, there'll be less of those. As we go along, it's only like 700 of them. But it's, it's a good start.
No, it's a real good start. And we're looking at longevity, we're looking at dependability, we're looking at more lumens. I mean, you can't lose with this program.
And we also want, in the future, when, if there's new subdivisions, if there's new streets, to actually have a standard that forces the LED light.
And would, would, would that extend to new construction too?
That's what I'm referring to, new construction.
No, I meant, you know, on a house, or, or a...
The lighting in a house? That's a building issue, I really don't know where we're at with that statewide. I'm not sure. Jim, do you know?
Yeah, I couldn't answer you off the top of my head if they're required to do LEDs in new housing construction, or, I really couldn't give you an educated answer.
Okay, all right. Well, if you run across it in your study sometime, fine, if not, don't spend any extra time. Not on the priority list. Okay. Scott, do you have any more questions?
I got one more comment, and then if there are no other questions, I'll make the motion. But I just, I really like the idea on, you know, changing our regulation, our standard, to include any new construction this point forward, that these lights be put in. It just, it makes sense that if we're going that way, let's not have to add those to the list that need to be changed. You know, by changing the standard, they spend a couple bucks more on the front end maybe, but then, at least at this point moving forward, we're going down the same path, we have all the same kind of lights there. So, if there are no other questions, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt city council resolution number 5634, entering into the agreements, the four that were previously stated, with PG&E Streetlight Turnkey Program, and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreements, the four we talked about, documents.
Mr. Feria?
Second.
Motion by Silveira, second by Feria, to approve city council resolution 5634 as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
None.
Carried. Thank you all. Item 10, industrial park presentation. City Manager Carrigan?
Thank you, Mayor. The last few months, we've been meeting with property owners, neighboring property owners. We made a trip to the FAA in Brisbane, and met with Robin Hunt and Douglas, Maverick Douglas is his name, the, he's the new director for the FAA, because this industrial park does have a runway component to it. We've spent a lot of time with Caltrans and their aeronautics division, also with, we met with the district ten director recently, and we also met with Malcolm Doherty, the director of Caltrans, to get their input and kind of bring them up to speed on the project. We also had a chance to meet over the holidays with Congressman Costa, and Juan Lopez, his chief of staff, and Matt Wainwright, their, his, their district rep. The point I'm trying to paint here is that we're meeting with the staff people that will actually work on the project, but also the management folks and the director level. So, everyone up and down these different agencies and organizations is aware of our project. Why? Because the next step is an important step. Next Tuesday, January 13th, I'll go to the Board of Supervisors, and I'm going to give a 15-to-20-minute presentation on the project. And it's really just a commercial from about the 30,000-foot level, on the project, everything we've done to date. And then I'm going to go back to the Board of Superv, the Mersey County Board of Supervisors on February 3rd, and I'll give a more detailed presentation. County staff will make their comments on what's called a guidance package, and then we'll get input and have dialogue with the supervisors. And what we're looking for is, we need to form a partnership with the property owners, the supervisors, and the city. The project is just too far for us to annex, it's too large for us to annex. So, we really need to do something really unconventional here, which is create a partnership with the property owners, the county, and the city. The actual technical piece that we're up against next would be to do a study for, on the infrastructure, because if water, storm, and sewer numbers don't pencil out, we won't have a project. If we can get past an infrastructure study, that initial infrastructure study on water, storm, and sewer, and we say we still have a project, the next step would be to do a study on what kind of tenants would we get for this type of project. And that's a little bit more expensive of a study. So, the first step is an infrastructure cost study, then a tenant study. We also have other issues to deal with, like ag mitigation, it's something that the county really wants. It's, it's very expensive, puts a large burden on the project. But what I'm going to ask the board on Tuesday, the 13th, and then again, more formally on February 3rd, is to create this partnership to discuss issues like an infrastructure study, a tenant study, ag mitigation. So, we'd have representatives from the property owners, the city, and the county on this working group. That's where we're at in the project. Everybody we've talked to has been supportive, they've, they've given constructive criticism for what to expect from them, but we've yet to run into a wall, or a roadblock, or some, some issue that just is a showstopper. I've been very impressed with the Caltrans people. The FAA actually was very, very helpful, and we thought we would run into... and we thought we would run into a little bit of trouble there, but not at all. Jim Costa was, Congressman Costa was terrific, he offered up all the help we needed. But we're, we're getting past the meeting and talking stages, and now we're getting to the pencils and the paper stages, and we're going to find out if we have a project or not. And so I don't think we're that far away from seeing if we have a project or not. So that's the update for now. If you have any questions, I can take them, but I think the, the next key moment is really is February third, at the Board of Supervisors, and then the formation of this working group, which we'll probably meet in February, maybe mid to late February, I'll say, and then, so we're going to find out where we're at here, February, March, April of 2015.
Steve, why don't you talk a little bit about the, the fact that this is not a, a project that Los Banos wants everything, and that what we're looking at is to enhance jobs throughout the county?
I had a long talk last week with Jim Brown, the county executive officer and supervisor of Banion, and, it was about a week ago now, and it was a long talk about this project isn't about Los Banos, it's about Merced County. It's about a foundational piece for the future of Merced County. After looking at the county's general plan, their comprehensive economic development strategy, it's, it appears to me that we're looking to urbanize the eastern side of the county, and the western side of the county will stay agricultural. And I'm okay with embracing agriculture, but we, we also need to find a way to bring jobs here. And so when Stacy, Susan, and I started looking for the best piece of property in Los Banos about a year, year and a half ago, we stopped and said, the best piece of property for an industrial park isn't in Los Banos, it's at 165 and 5, which is in the county. And our first request to LAFCO, the organization that allows us to annex or not annex, we went to them and talked to their staff, and we knew the answer, we're just too far, and the project's fifteen hundred acres. Legally, we can annex three hundred acres, but at fifteen hundred acres, you know, they just, they just looked at us, their eyes crossed, because they knew that the project's just too big to annex. So we need to create a joint powers agreement, some sort of arrangement where we're partners with the county and the property owners. We have to remind everybody, you're probably thinking, why, if the project's that good, and if this guy likes this project that much, why don't the property owners just bring it forward? Why don't they get a developer and bring it forward? They're making money. They're already making money right now. And so when I met with them early on, before we even talked in this room at all about this project, I met with a couple of the property owners, and I said, what's the bottom line here? And they said, if you can show us that you're, we'll make more money by going with your plan than what we have the plan right now, we'll go with your plan. So that's how this whole story got started. They were very clear, we're making money, so you have to show us how we're going to make more money. Now, I've, I've talked to them, and have been in contact with them every step of the way, and I've talked to them, and said, you know, there's going to be some risk, and we're going to have a conversation about risk and reward, because the project does generate ten thousand jobs. Probability of success on a big project like this is very small. We're in California, we don't have utilities to the site, if it does generate ten thousand jobs, we only have seventy thousand in our, in our, on our market or trade area. So we have some real challenges to face, but nothing's easy. If it was easy, we wouldn't be sitting here talking to you, it would have been done by now. So it's going to be difficult, we have no, no reservations about that, we're not naive at all, we know exactly what we're up against, and on our best day, the chances are, you know, not great, because it's just, we are in California, we're not plug and play on utilities. I mean, this is not going to be an easy project, but I know that they've been doing this in San Juanquin County, I know that they've been doing it in Stanislaus County. If you look at the city of Tracy, they just announced another, announced another million square feet at a place called Cord's Ranch, which is an eighteen hundred acre project. It's the largest project on the west coast right now. Stanislaus County's doing it in Patterson and at Crow's Landing, they're going through the process that we want to go through. Stanislaus County owns Crow's Landing, so they hired a company called AECOM, and very first-class company, and they're going to deliver an EIR and master plans for water, storm, and sewer by July first of 2015. They're going through the public meeting process right now. I'm jealous, I wish we were doing what they're doing. And they have a runway with their project. So I view it as Tracy, Patterson, Los Banos, I think it's almost like a Bartline. So, and we have yet to have anybody really tell us, this isn't going to work. The infrastructure study will give us clear direction if we have a project or not, and then I can't stress enough, we have to see if we have tenants, and will tenants locate here? So we're getting to the real interesting part of the project, and we're looking forward to getting some of these answers and see, see if we have a project or not. But we need the county's support, we need the property owners, obviously, and their support, but I can tell you right now, I had a long talk with, again, long talk last week with Jim Brown and Supervisor Banion, and I'm convinced that they are on board, this project's going to get a fair shot, and looking forward to next Tuesday at the board, and then going back on February third, a little more detailed presentation.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted you to stress that we're not in competition with anyone, all, we're here to enhance the west side of the, the county.
Yeah, we're not looking to, to compete with anything that the county might be doing at Castle, or on the eastern end of the county, we want to complement, and we're separate projects, we're different projects. These, I, I don't see it as competition at all, I see it as more of a complimentary project, and I've always said, the last twenty years, I-5 is infinitely better than 99, and I'll say that till the day I die, it is, and you can get to Canada or Mexico in no time, 99 is rough. A lot of agricultural trucks going up and down, and I get it, I drove that road for years, also drove 95, or I-5 for years, and we are in a very enviable position, because this fifteen hundred acres is right at 165 and 5, and there's immediate access on and off, and if there's going to be a project on the west side of Merced County, it's going to be at I-5 and 165, and if it doesn't happen now, you can mark my words, it will happen at some point, it might not be for five, or ten, or fifteen, or twenty years, but at some point, that piece of property is going to get eyeballed by some, some folks, because it's just too good of a piece of property.
Does anyone else have the on-off, the way this property does?
No. Now, this is immediate access, and on and off, so. Our problem is, in Tracy, they've been doing it for the last ten years, and Patterson, their project got started, the Amazon project, that, that industrial area, I don't know the name of it, that industrial area, that project was, that idea was born in 2001. So it took them ten years before anything really happened, and we've been on this for a year, and so I don't want to wait nine more years to get to that point, but these big projects take a long time, and big projects are risky, and the reward is great, but we are far behind. And I can't stress enough, Crow's Landing, they're, they're coming fast and hard, so maybe it'll be Tracy, Patterson, Crow's Landing, Los Banos, but we're going to find it, the key is really this, this engineering study, this infrastructure study, to see if the project pencils out, because if it doesn't, we'll come up with another idea.
Okay. All right, thank you. Then you can give us a report after the thirteenth, at the next, next council meeting. Thank you. All right. Item number eleven, any comments by council members this time? Okay, all right, let's go on to appointment of commission members for the following. Well, over the, the past few weeks, I and another council member, and members of the city of Los Banos interviewed a large number of applicants for different commissions, Parks and Recreation, Planning, Tree, EDAC, and Airport Advisory. And very impressed with the, the people who interviewed. We had, in some cases, we had far more applicants than we had positions, and very grateful that there was a huge interest in the, in the process. So, with that being said, I would like to take each one individually, starting with 11A, Airport Advisory Commission. And at this time, I would like to bring forth the names of Dave Anderson, Alan Wilbur, and Don Shifano, for approval by this council, and that would be my motion. Could I please have a second? Mr. Faria?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion by the mayor, second by Faria. The three names that were listed, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. B, Economic Development Advisory Committee, three vacancies, and two city council member appointments, and an appointee, or appoint the Los Banos Unified School District's recommendation, and this was made by the Los Banos Unified of Tommy Jones. And at this time, I would like to bring forth the names of Kathy Ballard, David Dees, and Ann McCauley, to add with Tommy Jones, on the Economic Development Advisory Committee. And that's my motion. Could I have a second, please? Question?
I've got a waiver.
Oh.
Your district school board representative on EDAC.
I believe the school board representative is on...
Parks and Recreation.
Okay, it says here in the, okay, so, so we're going to need to change that, then. So that would be for Parks and Recreation?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so...
Yeah, we need two council members.
All right. So, scratch, so my, my Economic Development Advisory Committee, I would bring forth the names of, what?
They're going to ask me to do this.
Yeah, they're going to ask you to do this, I see this here.
All right, let's see. Yeah, you need two council members. So we need two.
We're bringing forth these names right here tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, 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 yeah. No, 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 we're correct, we're correct. All right. So tonight, I'm bringing forth these three names, Kathy Ballard, David Dees, and Ann McCauley, and that would be my recommendation. Do we have a second? Mrs. Lewis?
Second the motion.
Okay, motion by the mayor, second by Member Lewis, to the three names mentioned. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to Parks and Recreation, and I'm bringing forth...
Are you going to put the two council members on that?
We need two council members on that.
Members for the EDAC committee as well. Two council members.
Well, we have two city council member appointments. Oh, okay, for that, yes. Okay, so I need two city councils, we'll do it in a separate action. Two council member appointments for the EDAC committee, do I have volunteers?
I want to make a motion.
You want to make a motion?
Yeah.
Well, can I get, see if we have volunteers before you make a motion? Okay, Mrs. Lewis, anyone else?
Tom.
Mr. Faria?
Councilmember Faria's been on for a while.
Okay, Councilmember Faria's been on, Mrs. Lewis has volunteereded.
We've volunteereded.
All right, well, can I have your motion now? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Faria and Mrs. Lewis to the EDAC.
Mr. Stone Grove?
Second.
Okay, motion by Silveira, second by Stone Grove, with the appointment of Mr. Faria and Mrs. Lewis to the EDAC committee as council member appointments. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay, now, we're going to go on to Parks and Recreation Commission, and I would like to bring forth the two names of Pastor Osorio and Ronald George, and that would be my recommendation.
That one has Tommy.
And just, okay, we'll get that, yeah. And the addition of a, of Tommy Jones, who was recommended by the Los Banos Unified School District. Okay, so with that, Mr. Faria?
I'll second that.
Okay. It's motion by the mayor, second by Faria, and the three names are stated, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay, let's go on to Planning Commission. And at this time, I would like to bring forth the four names of Arkady Factorovich, Palmer McCoy, Tom Spada, and Susie Toscano, and that would be my recommendation. Do I have a second? Mr. Silveira?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion by the mayor, second by Mr. Silveira, on the four names. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Tree Commission, let's see, I would like to bring forth the names of Mary Cokely and Tom Calgen. Do I have a second? Mr. Faria?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by the mayor, second by Faria, and the names brought forth, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay, now, Lucy, the, the open positions are, do we need to make a motion to re-advertise? Are we just going to put it online, or what are we going to do?
You could do that.
What, a motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I have one open position.
I believe, let's see, and, do we have two on EDAC?
Yes.
Okay, EDAC is, would be two, and...
No, you're good on EDAC.
No EDACers, ma'am, because you have...
Are we pointing to council members?
Yes.
Okay, so we have Parks and Recreation. Okay, we have one position? Okay, and anything else?
Okay.
Okay, good. Okay, can I have a motion, then, to, to re-advertise for the Parks and Recreation Commission? Mr. Faria?
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Silveira?
Can we clarify, are we re-advertising in the paper, or on, on their website?
Lucy?
Do you want to pay for something in the enterprise, or do you want it just to fly on the website?
Council?
Maker of the motion.
Faria?
Just fly it on the website for now, and see what we get.
I'll second that.
Okay, all right, clarified? Okay, so let me, let me, let me restate that, then, we are going to, the motion would be by Mr. Faria, to advertise for one Parks and Recreation Commission on the website only, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and you second that?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay, so we are, good. Any other comments, Lucy, on those, are we okay? All right, good. And let me, before we go on, we, we have other individuals who served on the Tree Committee, and they did not receive a certificate tonight, because they served one year, and it was just recently appointed, and that would be Mary Cokely and Tom Calgen, and then we have a continuance of Rebecca Techen, John Sveback, and Colleen Menefee. And Ronald George is the new one appointed. Okay, and, and he has served an unexpired term, starting his, his first year. Okay, so just for clarification as to why some people receive certificates and some did not, it has to be a two-year term in order to receive a certificate, and if you filled an unexpired term of one year, then the certificate comes after the, the two-year term. Okay, let's go on to advisement of public notices, and we have one report, Assistant Planner Elms?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we have a site plan review for Mi Barrio, they're requesting to put back the fuel stations at what was the old Circle K. That public hearing will be January fourteenth, and the Planning Commission will decide whether to permit that there or not, that night.
Okay, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's go on to City Managers' Report, Mr. Carrigan?
Thank you, Mayor. There was a few events in December, microphone...
Got it. You're lit up.
Wrong, okay. There was a few events in December that I want to talk about, just for a second, I'll be quick, but brother Faria, the parade was fantastic, it was a little wet, but it was bigger, it was better, I was there, got a chance to ride with Tim and the engine, and the council members, everyone had a great time, those kids had a ball, and everyone got, everyone in the Christmas spirit, so really outstanding event. The next morning, there was Breakfast with Santa at the Community Center, it was my first chance to get to go see that in person, and I know they were close to five hundred, they were talking four hundred, but I remember hearing the number five hundred a lot the next few days, and everybody that went through that line to get food, got everything they wanted, they were having a great time, those kids had a ball, making ornaments, Santa was fantastic, and I, I thought I'd, you know, be a little tired... And I thought I'd, you know, be a little tired for that after the night before, but it was great. Mark really told everybody over there, and I tried to get to as many as employees. I mean, they just put on a fantastic event, and it's not just for kids, it's also for big kids and adults. And it was just really neat to see a parade on one night, and the next morning, this breakfast just went off, it seemed like without a hitch. But I know there's a lot that goes into it, so I wanted to recognize everybody. I gotta list her, 50 names, I can't read them off, but thank you to all the employees and the volunteers, just, it was two great events. The fire dinner, thanks, I got invited to Public Works's barbecue, their holiday lunch and the fire dinner, and I had a ball. Michelle had a great time, wanna make sure to tell you guys publicly, thank you, thank you, thank you. It was just, it was a great time, both of them, just had a great time. Tim, I wanna congratulate you one more time. You earned it, you deserve it, we're looking forward to it, congratulations. And the last thing is kind of a little bit of an odd item after all that good news. It's that time of year when I get lots of emails, texts, or I see them, it's these shopping carts all over town. And typically, I turn to Gary Breezy in Code Enforcement, and I just say, hey, we have a list, and we try to contact the stores. I recognize it, please stop calling and texting me, I've got it. I talked to Mike a little bit about it, I don't know if you have any comments to say, but I know that we're looking at what other cities are doing, and what can we do to kind of address this issue of just abandoned shopping carts, 'cause they just, it's that time of year, it just seems like they're everywhere again, and maybe it's just me, but I'm getting calls, I'm getting texts with pictures, and trying to, trying to handle it. There are, there is the law, which is, kinda handcuffs us a little bit, but I know we have a list of all the stores, there are contact people, they'll send out a truck, but I do wanna take a look at some other ordinances of other cities, and just see what other people are doing. So we're gonna take a look at that, and if there's anything there, we'll come back, but if, you know, if not, if our, if our system works, we're just gonna continue down that path, but...
Can I offer a suggestion? And see if the council likes this? Yeah, I've gotten calls about the shopping carts too, but I know you've gotten far more than I have, and I don't know if other council members have also, but would it be possible, and I know it's possible, I just wanna know if you guys think it's a good idea, I'd like to pen a letter along with the city manager to all the businesses in town that have shopping carts, and ask them to voluntarily police the shopping carts in town, and give them one chance to, to now work with us, because obviously, our ordinance isn't tough enough to, to have them collect the carts that are, that are on the streets now, because they're all over town. And, and I'm thinking, if they voluntarily comply, then we're not forcing our hand, and if they don't comply, or if some people don't comply, then we can bring the ordinance back per the city manager's request, and go through an analysis of that ordinance, and then make corrections accordingly to have people comply with not having these shopping carts all over town. So what I'm asking the council is just, unless, unless you have a, a problem with, with me writing, voluntarily writing a letter to all the, the businesses in town that have shopping carts, and asking them to voluntarily comply, so that way, we're not forcing the hand, and we're not, we're not hammering them just to begin with, and give them a chance to correct things. Okay? Mr. Faria?
Sounds are good, Emmy.
Okay. Mr. Stonegrove, you okay with that? Okay. So this? Yeah. Mr. Sedar?
No, I'm the other guy.
Okay, I, yeah, I'm just looking at this, I'm saying, okay, we'll give them a chance to comply. And, and, and hopefully, that they'll get the picture, and if they don't, then Mr. Carrigan put, can put a agenda item on, and, and we'll review, and we'll have the city attorney and Stacy review the, the ordinance, and, and find out how it can be better for the citizens of Los Banos to not have all these shopping carts all over town. Mrs. Lewis, comment?
Yes. Are you thinking of a timeframe of how much time you're going to allow businesses once you send the letter out?
There'll be a timeframe in there.
There'll be a timeframe.
There'll be, there'll be a timeframe to, just asking for their support, and, and let them know, and we'll, we'll pen the letter, and, and, Bill, would we, if I, okay, you know what I'm gonna ask you. If, if we sent the letter out for council review before it went out, would that be an agenda item, or can't do that?
You're actually kinda getting into an agenda item right now.
Okay, all right, then I'm going to stop, and I'll just write the letter. Okay, and then we'll go from there. All right, that way, we'll stay out of the agenda item arena. Okay, all right, thank you for keeping this on track. All right, let's go on to City Council Member Reports, and for teens tonight, we'll start with Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you. Just making reference to the thank yous that our city manager has done, I'd like to also top that and say, I agree with him about the Christmas parade, and congratulations, Tim. I'm really proud of you, and I know you'll do a great job. I'd also like to thank all of our city staff for the wonderful job that they've done in the past year. Some have worked really hard in the position to help us maintain. Stacy, I wanna put a special thank you out to you for maintaining the Plan, the Planning Department. And to all of our Parks and Recreation staff, to our Public Works staff, and to our administrative staff, and to our police and fire, who are there on a daily basis protecting us and our community. Special thanks to them, because it's been a little bit a hard time here in the United States in regards to our protective forces. So I wanna tip my hat off to them, and thank them very much for the job that you do, and how you protect us in this city and take care of us. And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go on to Mr. Silveira.
I gotta, well, I had a couple things for tonight, and I added one more that I wanna get into in a second, but congratulations to Chief Marison, well deserved, I've said it before, super excited about the future and moving forward, so kudos to you. Another one, I just found out today, and I didn't even get a chance to talk to the Public Works Director yet, but I'm super excited about the work that's gonna be going on in front of the county fire station. The entryway, the ramp there is, with that big equipment, and the approach is a little bit off, and, and Public Works is, it's time for them to redo that there, and so I know that the guys down at the station are excited about it, so thank you for that, and I look forward to seeing that project get done and, and move on to the next thing. Last thing, I guess, and I know we're not supposed to respond to public comment section, but I just had a real issue with it, and I'm not gonna mention any names, but probably know, you know, this is Parks and Rec Commission, and I feel like I'm a pretty accessible guy. I feel like if, if you reach out to me via the phone, via email, I'm, I'm pretty, you know, I get back to you. I, I try to always call you back and, and, you know, look into, if you have questions, and you might not like the answer, but at least I'll try to get you the official answer. I feel like I do a pretty good job of that, and tonight's the first time that I heard that, in, in one person's opinion, that our Parks and Rec Commission is a waste of time, and there's no need for them, and, and I, that kinda bothers me a little bit, because I wish that instead of complaining about stuff, people would offer up solutions, because, you know, I mean, listen, everybody's working hard at doing what they're doing up here, and we're all running 100 different ways most times, and it's not the only thing on our plate, and so that's part of what, to me, what, what we ask these folks, and I appreciate, I appreciate the people that volunteer their time to be on these commissions. But part of being on that commission is to advise the council, and I don't see how it does anybody any justice to advise the council, and I get it, the light, the bright lights are on, TV's on, to advise us all in, in front of a council meeting. I'm, I'm sure, you know, the folks that set up those meetings, maybe, maybe they would have liked to have been advised, and, and I would have, you know, drop me an email or a phone call to let me know that you have these frustrations, and maybe as a council, we can talk about some of this stuff, because all this stuff that I heard today, first time I heard it. So, I don't know, it is moving forward, that kinda just bothered me a little bit, you know, this is to any, any of you newly appointed commissioners, or we have planning commissioners, whatever committee or commission you're on, if there's, if you have issues, I mean, obviously, you wanna talk with the staff person that you're dealing with, but if you see concerns there, and you have maybe some better ideas, is how do we can make, you know, make better use of your time, and help you to do a better job, which, you know, all these committees are extensions of the council, so to me, you know, if you're doing a better job, that helps us to do a better job, because we're all better informed. So if you have things that you think, you know, would be a better use of your time, please, I don't, I, I hope I'm not speaking for myself, I think I'm speaking for the whole council, reach out to us. Get ahold of one of your council members, and, and let them know, and then, you know, we can, we can approach it that way. It just kinda, I was taken back a little bit that, you know, we kinda got called out on something that I never heard of, hadn't heard of any of these issues before tonight, and I, I feel like that was kinda maybe a little unfair, but, you know, I guess life's not always fair, so, that's all I got, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stonegrove?
Thank you. I would just like to extend my congratulations one more time to our new fire chief, Marison, and I have nothing further for this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Faria?
You got it right. It took you 30 years.
Well, simpler to pronounce than Faktorovich.
For some people. Once again, congratulations, Tim. And remember, next week, and the week from Monday, you've got Martin Luther King Day. I recommend for everyone to read the whole speech, the whole "I Have a Dream" speech, so you really understand the depth of the man's thought and the contribution he made. And I hope everyone has a wonderful new year, start of a new year now, on our way. Have a great couple of weeks, and we'll see you back.
Jim? Okay, Tim, again, accolades, welcome aboard. The, I'm going to expand a little bit on what you said, Silveira, because you're absolutely right, and I, the first thing I did is I turned to Mr. Carrigan, and I said, do you know anything about this? And he says, no. Never heard a word, and to my knowledge, the Public, our Public Works Director had no knowledge of this, according to Mr. Carrigan, and all of a sudden, we get, we get slammed with it. It's, if you've got something to say, you have to come and tell us. And there are a lot of commissioners that, that call, and are very upfront, and some of them I meet with on a regular basis, and talk to, and very open. So I want you to continue to do that with the, with the council members, and the newly appointed ones, please do the same thing. Because, again, this is the first time I've ever heard of it, and I don't know if any of the council members have ever heard of it, but, but if you've got something to say, please, please say it. The, and stop me if I'm saying something that's not correct, I'm gonna talk about the warming shelter for a minute. Okay, all of the cities in the county agreed to a temperature of, as to when they would open a warming shelter or a cooling shelter. And so, we get requests to say, well, the temperature's gonna be this, temperature's gonna be that. The cities all came up with a standard as to the cities would live with, and so when you see one warming shelter or cooling shelter open up, you'll see one in another city too. And that temperature is highly regulated by our fire department, who, who basically says, okay, it's time for this, or it's not time for it. So I just want you to know, this is not an arbitrary decision. It is a decision that is agreed upon, and I see you wanna chime in, so go ahead at this time.
No, I was just gonna say that the general rule is at 32 degrees, we'll open a warming center, and in the summertime, it hits 105, we'll open a warming center. These are for three-day periods.
Yeah.
We're a little unique in that we do this, but all the other cities don't. So you may think, well, everyone's opening a warming center, everyone's opening a cooling center. No, they don't. So I just wanna make, let everyone know that there's some rules out there that we've all talked about.
But there's a standard that we've kinda talked about.
Right, right, and we do it. That's the difference. We do it, and I just assumed everyone else was doing it too, but I found out that they're not. And I'm only worried about Los Banos, but when you talk, I just wanna make sure that everyone understands that, yeah, we, we talked with the other cities in the county, and we've kinda set up our, the rule at 32 and 105 for three-day periods, but we do it. We open warming centers and cooling centers, and not everyone does, so...
And during the daytime, and warming shelter, center, and cooling center, the, the community center's available. And we've sent people over there, some people have taken advantage of it, as to, because it's very, very cool there during the day, and it's warm there during the day, depending upon the weather. So we have limitations, because when we open a warming shelter, it's not just calling for volunteers. And we have volunteers, and Gloria Mendonza and her crew out there, and I, I don't have a list of the name of all the, the city workers that were there during the night too, that stayed there, but we have, we have staff, city staff, that will stay there, because we have to follow a certain procedure, and we can't just leave volunteers there high and dry. So just to open a warming or cooling shelter, it's not to say, okay, we're gonna open up a building. That's not the expensive part. The expensive part is having staff there also, to make sure that all the needs are met. You wanna say something else?
You got it.
Okay, so, so I want everybody to know that, that, you know, we, we can't be everything to everyone. And if you look now at the, the cities such as Merced, who were, had a homeless encampment, they had two of them, and now they're finding that they need to, to clean up those homeless encampments, because it's, it's, you know, we don't want any type of diseases spread, we don't, we don't want any dysentery issues with sanitation, all these things that, that would not promote a healthy environment. And so, talk to your city workers, talk to your council members. We are in the process of applying for a grant, hopefully, we'll get it, and that was the unanimous decision by this council to, to move forward with a $12,000 stipend from the city in order to hire someone to write this grant, and then if the grant process goes through, there's another step to this, and that next step is to find an eight-to-10 unit apartment complex. And so it's not guaranteed, then we have to find someone who's going to sell us that property. That's step number two. And, and the council was very adamant about having a, a shelter for, for battered women. And we're very, very proud that, that we wanna go forward with this. So it's something that the council in total agrees with. So we're gonna do what we can. And it's an effort and participation that, that is, is probably taken on by all the religious communities, Salvation Army, you know, any, any nonprofit group that, that goes towards, towards helping people less fortunate. So there are things being done. Everything that needs to be done is probably not going to happen, but we're gonna try and relieve any of the suffering in any way we can. So I just wanted to just bring that forward, that, that there are rules for a warming and cooling shelter, and, and this city does abide by those. And we do exactly what we can, and it, then we have city staff that are also, will also man the facility, because it needs to be done, because we need to make sure that it is a safe environment, along with the good volunteers who stay up all night to, to watch the facility also. So if you'd like to get involved as a volunteer, we would, we would love to have you. And, and if the, the warming shelter or cooling shelter is open, you can, who would they contact to, to be a volunteer?
Public Works.
Public Works, okay? Contact Public Works if you'd like to be a volunteer in this area. All right, with that, thank you to, to all the events we attended during Christmas, and the city people are the best cooks, I have to say that, they're wonderful cooks, and, and well-planned...